Madam President, the time is five thirty four.
Okay, let's go, go ahead and get this started. I know that Trustee Turner is on her way, the rest of the trustees are here. And Cabinet is here, so. Good evening, everyone, the date is Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty two. This is a special, special board meet, meeting, it's a govern, governance work workshop of the Adalanto L, L, Element, Elementary School District. The time is now five thirty, thirty, thirty five, can we have roll call please?
Trustee Eckes? Trustee La French?
La French present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster present.
Trustee Benz?
Benz Parret present.
And Trustee Turner will be arriving shortly.
Yes, okay, go, going on to one point zero, zero four, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Place your right, right hand over your heart, ready, be begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go, going on to two, uh, adoption of the agenda. Two point zero one, proposed additions, delete lesions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any tonight.
Thank you. Uh, two point zero two, adopt, adoption of the agenda, can, can I get a motion to approve?
I motion.
Oh, and you know, turn on, use that, I'm gonna want to spread.
It's okay.
You can turn it on or leave.
Okay, but on, I motion.
Okay, and can I get a sec, second please?
Webster, a second.
Thank you. Uh, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, and Trustee Turner just walked, walked in.
Madam President, the time is five thirty seven.
Okay, thank you. So motion, mo, motion pass, passes four zero, zero. Okay, move, moving on to pub, public test, testimony, do, do we have, um, uh, representative from A, ADTA?
Yes, Madam President, we have Ms. Jennifer Ritter, we'd like to welcome her to the podium this evening.
Thank you very much, nice to see you all here tonight. Um, good evening, all. Um, I want to begin by thanking Mr. Kraus for coming to Morgan and Kate's Fall Festival last week. He dressed as a cowboy and came and joined us, and he took a pie in the face, I heard. And we just really, really appreciate, uh, he comes to our sites, he spends time engaging members in conversation. He spends time with us, he doesn't just blow in and blow out, he takes a minute and listens and asks questions and responds. Um, we would ask each of you to take the time to see our schools too. Um, it's nice to see you at the assemblies, but it would be great to see you in our classrooms. Take a minute, talk to the kids, ask about our bulletin boards, find out what, what the kids think about what's going on in class. Um, you'll, you'll learn a lot by just coming and spending sit ten fifteen minutes instead of blowing in and out too quickly. We'd love to have you, we welcome you, the more, the better. Honestly, I'll tell you personally, if I see you once a year, I get nervous. If I see you every couple of months, I know you're gonna see it all, you're gonna see the good, you're gonna see the bad, you're gonna see everything in between. So that's just me personally, but I think a lot of teachers will agree with me. Um, let's see, get to know the schools that you lead. Mr. Kraus has very much so, the fact that he cares really shows. He's been amazingly responsive to every question and concern. He's rearranged his schedule and dropped everything to meet with teachers in crisis. For example, today, um, Mason and the middle school teachers needed to debrief, they needed to process, they needed to vent air concerns about what the happenings of the last couple of weeks. And he dropped everything to go meet with them and give them a chance to air their concerns and process what we've been going through. Um, we appreciate his brand of hands-on caring leadership. Um, good news to report that I think we have six hundred and thirty-three new students in attendance in our district. So we're growing, we're working on the attendance problem today at Morgan and Kate. Uh, Mrs. Cooper held a raffle drawing for, for random perfect attendance, uh, students from the month of October, and I much, I lost track of how many call, names she called out, but they had a little um, gift from our PTA for every one of them. And the kids get excited about that, we need to do something to prod the parents and students to want to come back to school. Unfortunately, I think we sent a message that year that we, that we left school. We sent the message that it's not that important to come to school, you can do it from home. And they can't, they can't do it from home, it's okay to have your Chromebooks, it's okay to have your programs, they've got to be in the seats. And we need to reverse that message that we put out there. So there's that. Um, we may need to make some billboard ads, some radio ads, we need to let people know the importance of, of attendance, we need to really ramp that up. And especially our district, we, we, we really need our students to come to school. I have a very severe deficit of, of learning of, of skills in my classroom, I know many of us are facing the same, um, issues in our classes. And there's no helping them if they can't come to school. If they don't show up, I can't possibly do my interventions, like all the things I learn, all the things I know how to do, all the in-services we have, all the PD day, days we have. None of that will help me reach that child if they're home and not in my classroom. So we need to really make an active, uh, campaign to get them back in class. I wanted to say thank you, I'm so grateful for the support and teamwork of S, of CSEA. Uh, Nutrition Services and our secretaries, as we all know, run the schools. The proctors know the kids, they are helpful on the playgrounds, they're really, really, um, wonderful, wonderful assets to our schools. Our paraprofessionals, uh, we couldn't do it without them, we're very, very grateful for them. The custodians, transportation, and our unsung heroes, IT, actually, I think they're pretty not much sung heroes, because we tell them every time we get a chance that they are really our heroes, we really appreciate IT, without them, a lot of our programs would fall flat also. So I wanted to say thank you to, uh, CSEA at this time. What else, I'm looking at my notes here. So if you visit our campuses, you'll see that we have campuses that are pristine, immaculate, beautiful, in spite of the desert wind. And you might also see campuses that are on the other end of that spectrum. You really just need to know the schools you lead, you are the board members, you're the leaders of this community. You, as a, Mr. Anderson used to say so, so many years ago, you're driving the bus. I'm sure some of us remember those, that phrase, who's, who's driving the bus, well, you're driving the bus. So it's important that you know the schools you lead inside and out, and we would just love to see you there more often. On another, uh, aspect, I'd like to mention that, um, Mr. Kraus shared with me that he has a target solution training that he can offer our teachers on active shooter training. And I've heard from many, many members, we are eager for that training. Um, the chances of it happening, honestly, if you do the math, it's about one in seven million that a child will have, will, will die of a school shooting, but you don't want to be that one school, the schools are in the news all the time, it's going to be somewhere. So we need to have that not be our schools, and we've, we're in the news, we're on KFI for the things that happened last couple of weeks. We need to reverse that with proper training, proper preparation, and proper education for the students. Um, it's been, it's been kind of a scary couple of weeks for all of us. And I'm very, very pleased to say that, uh, Mr. Kraus said he would offer us some active shooter training on the target solutions, so we're talking about that. And hopefully, there will be a live, uh, event, a workshop on a Saturday that we can go to, to get some actual training, I know some, some of our teachers have done that type of thing exactly, and they said it's been extremely helpful, they feel prepared, they feel like they know what they would do, even though you know when that kind of thing happens, it's gonna blow everything out of the water, but it's just like our fire drills and our earthquake drills. You practice, you practice, you practice, and then when your brain goes numb because you're so scared, your, your instinct takes over and you, you prac, you, you perform what you practiced. So I'm sorry if I'm a feel a little around the, off the all over the board today, and my notes are rather scattered, but if there's anything else you ever have a question for, please reach out to me. My, uh, email is open, my door is open, I welcome questions, I wish, welcome comments, and I thank you very much for, for hearing me this evening, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, do, do, do we have a representative from CSEA?
Mr. Sinatra, is there anyone on Zoom from CSEA raising their hand?
I do not see anybody.
Okay, do we have any odd, audience men?
Madam President, we do not have anyone, um, in the audience.
Okay, uh, let, let's go on to four staff review reports and presentations, um, the curriculum workshop.
Madam President, Trustee La French has her hand raised.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, absolutely, no, not at all, pick a, pick any seat you, you prefer over there, we'll be more than happy to accommodate. All right. Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, this evening, we are excited to host our first workshop on our history and social science adoption process, and so we, uh, this evening, we have in store for you a couple of publishers that will be sharing, uh, their materials, but I'd like to invite Dr. Dweezin up to the podium so that she can uh, go over a slide presentation for us before we get started, and again, this is an open workshop, we appreciate any comments or questions throughout the, uh, process, so don't, you don't have to wait till the end. If at any point in time, any of the material that is, uh, gone over or Dr. Dweezin's material on her slideshow, by all means, please stop us, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions for you. And with that, I'd like to welcome Dr. Dweezin to the podium, she's behind me. Now I know what it's like to have somebody behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Um, good evening, Board of Trustees, um, I would like to first say thank you um, for the opportunity to share with you this evening. Um, we are, this is the beginning phase, um, of the adoption process for history, social science, and I would like to just say thank you and commend the board, um, for being active in this process, because it's very important. Um, I want to also start out by saying this is, uh, the beginning of a long process, it takes months in order for this to go all the way to fruition. So again, we're at the beginning stages, this is the introduction, and we are, we are excited to present, and we have a few of our publishers here this evening. So I'm just gonna walk us through, go ahead and go to the first slide, before I, before I go, I just want to give a special thank you to our academic services team over here, there's a lot of behind the scenes that happens in a textbook adoption, and our teachers that are volunteering to be a part of the adoption process and pilot materials, look at materials, dive deep into materials. Um, this is truly a collaborative and group effort, so I just want to publicly say thank you to all of them. So this evening, we have a few things on the agenda, we're gonna talk about our current reality, you have, um, some resources in front of you in the binder. Um, and we're gonna kind of go through those, we're gonna talk about the framework for history, social science, we're gonna talk about criteria for evaluating, like, how do these publishers even get to be here? Uh, we're gonna talk about our timelines, and we're gonna talk, uh, the publishers are gonna have opportunity to share what they have opportunities for, uh, presentations, and that's it. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and go to the next slide. So in the binder in front of you, you'll see our board policy on textbook selection, adoption process. You're gonna see the history, social science content standards. Um, you're gonna see our timelines for adoption, so what are we projecting, um, when we get to bring it in front of you for recommendation? How long will that take? Um, you'll also have a page for notes, you have sticky notes there, if you have questions you want to jot down, write down. Um, and we have a printout of the presentation you have in front of you. And I would have loved to give you the whole framework, but it's eight hundred and fifty-six pages, so um, we have the link for that, and at the close of this, we're also going to make sure you have links to both publisher items, the framework, anything we're talking about, we are gonna send to you digitally um, at the end, and if you would like a framework, we can get that for you. All right, I, I have one order already, we're gonna get that for you. All right, so the first slide that we have in front of you is, uh, Board Policy six one four two. And what I, what I pinpointed about this one is that this one specifically talks about history and social science. So I wanted to highlight this as, um, the main, um, within our board policy, what was important about history, social science, um, when the board policy was adopted? Um, to make sure that our, our students have, uh, knowledge, cultural understanding, including historical, ethical, cultural, geographic, economic, and socio-political literacy. Um, understanding civic values, so this is just the board policy, um, what we have um, within our own district of how we are viewing, um, history, social science. Next slide. So this is our, uh, state of California. And so the first slide, I'm gonna show you three different data sets. So this is just a preview, because on, in the November fifteenth meeting, we have a more in-depth data review that specifically speaks to our district. But I just wanted to give you a couple of snapshots, because this will help frame where we're going. So first of all, we have, this is the state of California, grades three through eight and eleven, take the CASP test. That means they're tested in ELA and they're tested in math. So in the state of California, in that circle in the middle, you'll see that we have forty-seven point zero six, so under fifty percent of students in the state of California are meet or exceeding expectations in English Language Arts. The second one, you'll see mathematics, which we're not digging quite into right now, but just to give you an idea, we're at thirty-three point thirty-eight percent in the state of California at meet or exceeds. Next slide. This is our county, so it's important to look at state, county, and our own. So our county has thirty-nine point eighty-nine percent of students at meet or exceeded in ELA. And then we're at twenty-four point forty-nine, meet or exceeded with math. Next slide. And this is our district, so we don't have grade eleven, because we're only an elementary school district. But I wanted you to be able to compare all three data sets, because what I see here is an opportunity for growth. This is an opportunity of where we are and where we're gonna go, because I believe our students are gonna just fly through the moon and we're gonna excel. So on ELA, you have twenty-two point, we have twenty-two point nine five percent of our students at meet or exceeding for ELA. And we have eleven point sixty-nine percent in math. So again, I'm gonna dive into these deeper and what we're doing and how we're doing it um, to address these and support our students. But I wanted you to have that frame, just so that you, um, can see those. So our current reality, our current reality is that the last adoption in history, social science was in two thousand and six. So we are still using that adoption right now that, uh, was Scott Forsman, who I don't even think they're, oh, okay. Um, and then Meg Dougal-Litel, so, um, these are the books that we currently have. So, but the current reality of this is that, um, textbooks, those textbooks, because we've adopted them, they're becoming increasingly difficult to find. So I have Wendy over here who can attest to that. We, we look on eBay, we look on, like, we have to, these are our board adopted materials. And when Williams case comes in, the county comes in annually, they look for those materials. So they're becoming increasingly difficult to find. Um, the current books are not aligned to our Common Core standards or the current history framework. So that means, I'm gonna kind of go down a few and then I'll talk a little bit, there's no digital version of the current textbooks. So we, um, send Chromebooks home with students, they have access to textbooks at home and at school, there's no digital version for what they have right now. Um, textbooks were, are the adopted ones, they're not written at the current reading level, so we use a Lexile as a measurement for reading. So, um, the books that we have now are not even at the correct level. Um, students are tested in reading in social studies indirectly. So what I mean by that is, on the state tests, they will get passages that are expository texts, those are what we call science and social studies type passages. And so we need our kids to have access to those, so they can think critically, so that they can understand to be able to respond to those. So starting in third grade, it's a lot of narrative, um, you might get a story, but as you go up, you're increasingly gonna see more and more history or science passages, and they have to analyze those. Um, additionally, um, the supple, we've been using a supplemental version every year. Um, and so it's not the full version, our teachers have been accessing it digitally. So that means our kids don't even have the books in front of them that matches that supplemental. Um, and that's cost us every year, when we're trying to put out, so about over three years, it's almost three hundred thousand that we've put out on supplemental materials. And then the needs for our students are not addressed, all of their needs. So when we talk about differentiation, I'm talking about our English learners, our special education students, um, our gifted students, even our TK and K students, their special needs that they have. Um, and then currently, the TK has no additional social studies materials, so our TK teachers, they ask me and they say, Ms. Dweezin, we need other things, because they have one item and it, like, everything is TK, as you teach it, blended model, but they're like, we just, we need more. So, um, across the board, that's our current state of where we're at with our books. Next slide, so this is just a quick, uh, Williams case, we all know about, we see those reports come every so often. But basically, we say that we have sufficient materials and that they're aligned to the state standards. So currently, the book that we have on the county, we meet Williams, because it is a waiver type of a thing, because many have not quite adopted yet. Next slide. So how do we get here, so in order for us to even consider a publisher, there's a process that they go through at the state level. So at the state level, there's a rigorous process, and it goes through their State Board of Education. So at the state level, there's a rigorous process and it goes through their state board of education. But basically they end up on this list and I'm going to go at how they get there in a minute. But all of these publishers that you see listed in your presentation, they're on the state approved list. So there's not a whole lot of them, but there's enough of them. And so districts, when they're looking for materials, we have to make sure we abide by the law. We have to make sure that we abide by what state of California says. And so additionally, we have our own things that we're looking for. We wanted a program that services TK to eight. We wanted a program that also had a Spanish component for our dual immersion. And additionally, we wanted our teachers and students to be able to have digital and print access. So that left us with two publishers. So you see McGraw-Hill, and we pointed to McGraw-Hill, who you will hear from this evening, and Pearson, who is now Savis. Okay, so they went through a name change. Next slide. So the criteria for evaluating instructional materials. First of all, it has to be aligned with the standards. And within that alignment of the standards, it has to meet something that's called the Fair Act. And the Fair Act is where you want to make sure that you have representation of everyone within. So kids and everybody sees themselves within the materials that you have. There's program organization and you actually have this broken down within your folder of what each of these are. But there's program organization. They look at assessment within the program. They look at universal access. That's how we're meeting the needs of all of our students. And they also have instructional planning and support within. So these two publishers coming before you met the state requirements as well as a state requirements to be in front of you today. Next slide. So this is just a quick overview. These are what the main topic or theme is for students each year, each grade level. So you can see that in front of you. It takes a wide variety and what that looks like for each grade level. Next slide. And then just a little about our process. And we are excited because teacher and parent involvement is important in this process. So for those of our parents who are, and teachers who are tuning in, whether in the audience or at home, you are very much a part of this process and we welcome you within this process for your voice. There are many opportunities for you to share your voice as a teacher and as a parent. Next slide. So this is just a quick review. You should have this kind of a little larger. This is our history, social science, adoption timeline. So I told you this was a month's long process. Because when we make an investment, and I call textbooks an investment, when we make an investment, we want it to be the right investment. So we start today. So today, the board having this presentation for you. So you understand what we're doing and how we're moving forward. We're going to have the team get Savis training. That's the first publisher that they're going to pilot. So they're going to get training from Savis. Then they have from 1128 to 16, they pilot it. You never want to adopt a book without piloting it. Then you go to, then in December, they're going to get trained on the other curriculum. So we're kind of like halfway in between both. But on the fifth, the adoption team's going to come together and they're going to say, what did we think about Savis? Okay. Then they move on to pilot McGraw-Hill. Then they come back together. What did we think about McGraw-Hill? And I want to highlight that student voices are represented in this process. So students will have an opportunity to say, hey, I really liked this. Or I wish they had more of this. Because kids can be brutally honest. We want their feedback. Additionally, so they come back in, in February. Then from, this is going to be a long time span because we need it to be. So from 1128 all the way to 27, we're going to have different opportunities for the public to come in and view the textbooks. So this, we have several school sites that will have full sets to make it easier. We don't want everybody to have to come here. We want to make sure we're out everywhere. And additionally, we will have opportunities for viewing here at the district office as well. So we have multiple opportunities through the day, morning, evening, which parents can come and view materials. Then on the seventh, all of the teachers who were piloting come and they put all their findings together. And they're going to create, we're going to have a presentation to the board in March and give that recommendation to you based on everybody's feedback. And I want to highlight also that as the board, you are always welcome to attend any of our meetings that we have to learn about this process. The idea is that we get all materials by the end of June so that we are ready to roll when the new school year starts. Next slide. This is just a kind of brief overview of the professional development. So you never want to have books and not support teachers with the implementation. So there's three different types of professional development. There's how to use the materials because sometimes maneuvering those can be tricky. There is training on the standards that you need to have that accompanies it. And then also, how do we do this work in the classroom? How do we have instructional strategies in the classroom as it relates? So you see that this is a long process in and of itself because we want to make sure that we do a thorough job. Excellent. So this is so far the makeup of our adoption team. So I'm proud to say that it is built the way it should be, which is that the teachers are the driver of this work. All of our 14 schools are represented. If you go to the next slide, you'll see all teachers. You'll see all grade levels. I think we had one exception somewhere. We have special education represented. We have TK represented. We have an admin voice, but this really, we also have dual immersion represented. So it was important to us that the voices of our teachers and our students and our programs were accurately represented. So I told you a little bit about our publishers. So both of the publishers you hear have a TK through eight curriculum. Both have a Spanish component for dual immersion. Both have digital and hard copy book. Both are on the approved list. Both will be piloted. And then we asked them to come this evening and present to you, what is my program about? What does it have? So you also have a note page in there. You can take notes on there. You have post-it notes. We asked that the publishers only present what the teachers are receiving. We asked that they address differentiated needs. So how are you going to address the needs for our English learners? Our special education, maybe students who are, who have challenge abilities. We want to make sure the gifted are represented. What are the different components of the program that are being purchased? And then board, we do have materials for you and we'll make arrangements through Ms. Levey to make sure that you get those materials that you're needing. So, so that concludes my portions, or if there's any questions.
Okay, board, do you have questions for Dr. Dwyson?
I do. President Benz. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Dwyson. I'm looking at the timeline and my question is, if ordering the material by April 15, 2023, will the textbooks be available at the beginning of school? It seems like there's not enough time and we've had problems in the past getting our books on time before school starts.
So I think, I believe we bring it to you in March. So right after that March, we get that order in. We did the science, we got most of the science. I think we had a couple of exceptions. Okay. Okay. So we're seeing that, that probably would be a really good question for our publishers when they come up.
And that's why, yeah.
But typically, when we did the science, we did the science in March. We did get majority, we had to order extra materials, but we got the majority before school started.
So I'm happy that the publishers are here because I would like to make sure that we have our full adoption at the beginning of school. So if we need to revise this timeline at any time, I would like us to consider doing that now.
Yes, we can, we will definitely, I have my, my team here, we're ready to hear that.
Okay, and any other trustees? No questions? I do have a question. First thing, the test scores, are those the current test scores now?
Yes, those are current. And I will be going deeper into those, I believe, in our November board meeting.
Okay. Also, I know when schools get new curriculum, you know, they get that first training. And it's like trying to drink water from a fire hose. It's like so much information. But when you're actually in the classroom trying to create your lesson plans, will there be an opportunity for additional trainings or specific trainings? So that teachers can utilize the programs better.
I thank you for asking that question. So the publisher, the timeline for professional development, there was a second one. So it is our intention that that training actually take over the year and sometimes goes into year two. Because you also have to, like you said, it's a crazy time of year. You also have to be able to receive that information at that time. So that's why we have three different types of professional development so that we can dive deeper for our teachers. But it is a part of a robust plan.
All right, thank, thank you. And I think we're, we're good.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to bring up our partners at Savis to present their program. We will have a break right after that and then we will let McGraw-Hill present.
So Ms. Turner, one of the questions that you had about the materials and that sort of thing. It's always best to get the POs in as early as possible so that you have the materials. However, we work really closely with Wendy to make sure that you have them for the start of school. And we have somebody on our team that works directly with her to help track everything. And if there's anything missing and stuff like that, to get back to her. So we've done that this year for your TK eight science adoption. And we would do the absolute same thing for history, social studies. So it is important that they have the materials for the start of school. And then, is it Benz? Thank you. Your question about professional development, we've had meetings with your extended leadership team here in the district for curriculum. And we have went through a comprehensive professional development plan over the first few years, should you adopt, so that your teachers have that continued training to go on. So we have been in discussion about that. We've had several meetings. So thank you for bringing that up. That's important.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome. And so I do want to introduce to you tonight, Joy Cotton. Joy Cotton is one of our specialists here at Savis. And she's going to be sharing some of the components that the teachers would receive and the students would receive for the pilot, as well as the components for the program. And here to answer any questions that you have as well.
Okay, good evening. Community members, parents, and of course, teachers. We are absolutely thrilled to be participating in your textbook adoption. So one of the places that I wanted to start is by mentioning that My World Interactive, Mi Mundo, in Mi Mundo Interactivo en Espanol, was built from the ground up and not something that we repurposed and then relabeled. We think that's important for your community to know because you are already using Scott Forsman. That is not the exact same thing as My World Interactive, but we do own that now Sunset title. The idea behind My World Interactive, being inspired by California educators, built in part by and with California teachers, is that it's also focusing on the unique California learner. So one of the things that your teachers will be using with your students intentionally across all of the grade levels is the student interactive. Now, this student interactive will look familiar to some of your teachers because it does have that familiar consumable design. But it is reimagined and repurposed to actually be a scaffold for your students. So when we think about social studies beyond the projects, if you're just flipping through the resources, we cannot escape how closely tied social studies is to literacy. That is how the students get the content. They've got to read it. Maybe they'll use audio support. Maybe teachers will pepper lessons with interactive. But at some point, literacy does come into play. So with the intentional design, what your teachers will appreciate is streamlined resources. Now, the entire lesson can be ran from the one student interactive before they would have to toggle between different resources, which they told us was not effective in delivering social studies instruction. Also, as they are using these resources, it's colorful, it's engaging. We want our students, as they're grappling with this complex text, to be able to mark it up, underline, circle, highlight. As teachers are spending time teaching in their ELA block, close reading skills, developing those skills, we want them to be able to transfer over with this main resource. So no more copying, pulling out transparencies. Just to let you know, I know how far back that program dates. Everything, including the activities and projects, are included in the one student interactive. This is a blended program, so everything we have in print is also available digitally. Something else about the intentionality of this program, thinking about the nuances between grade levels. This is something that teachers will appreciate in that thinking about TK instruction, we include a tabletop version of the student interactive. A lot of the instruction is play-based at that grade level. Thinking about kindergarten, first grade, second grade, these pages rip right out of this book. Again, instruction at those grade levels are happening in a different way than how we imagine an older, upper elementary student or even a middle grader. So that might be happening on the rug. You might be calling those students to the rug. You can rip those pages out and offer that streamlined experience. Also developmentally appropriate for the middle grades, something is happening to the content. It's becoming a little bit more complex, so you can just visually see. All right, that's the shift at sixth grade. So we do still have an interactive, engaging pathway. This is the student text, of course, available online. And then we want that idea to transfer over to our middle schoolers as well. We want them to have that field notebook filled with reading scaffolds, graphic organizers, places for them to practice vocabulary so they can acquire that academic and discipline-specific vocabulary, easy to use and ready to go. But not necessarily just a book of worksheets. So that's one of the things that we want the teachers to notice right away and that will work with them. So this is actually a scaffold for your middle schoolers. It's not an additional thing for your students to tear out and turn in. It is the reading scaffold to make it accessible for all learners. All right, I'm going to travel back to my device to show off a few of the digital courseware pieces. They are some of the differentiators and another way that we can meet the unique needs of all learners. Whether that be because they're at different grade levels. Just like we want instructional materials that are developmentally appropriate in print, we are offering developmentally appropriate digital materials as well. So you'll see those shifts. So for our award-winning platform, we do have a parallel experience for the digital student edition. Just like in the print edition, we want students to be able to grapple with that complex text, tape notes, annotate, they can do that with the interactive text. So we have that opportunity for students to approach instruction in that way where they're looking at it through the lens of an investigation, tying that to the, tying that to that framework. And students are also able to access their lessons from the student e-text. One thing that students, our teachers will tell you is that they are spending time planning, engaging lessons. We want to save your teachers' time. We have a partnership with MBC Learn, which allows us to offer curated resources that match the stamina of your students, so very accessible. Short, maybe one to two minutes in length, but they've got all of the bells and whistles. And most importantly, they're acting as a literacy scaffold in design, in disguise. This is going to build background, build that vocabulary that we want our students to have as they investigate different topics in history. So now, what I want to do is move you forward to a lesson and just show that parallel experience. Notice appropriate chunking in print and in black and white. Without a student having to collapse that digital text, I can pull up either version, print or digital, of my student interactive and receive that vocabulary practice and support. A lot of our students might look at this text and struggle, but we include literacy supports, love, 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 all the curated images. This is an example, as you're flipping through all of our courses, not just of diversity, how we're representing it, but of course, very important for history, social studies, embedded primary sources. So the curated sources that we use to tell that well-told story in history. Going back to our students who we service, we want them to be able to access that text. We have audio support. It is being read to your students or maybe even whole class in a natural voice reading reader. So that professional reader does, of course, help with reading comprehension. We also have different accented readers. Another feature that we know the students will appreciate as they're grappling with this complex text is that ability to highlight, circle, and underline, whether they're in print or digital. They can also annotate, ask questions to the teacher, type directly into the text. And this is going to be saved automatically for the kiddos. So this also pulls in flexibility for teachers. You're going to have some teachers who are working with older kids and they're ready to really engage their students with this resource. We also have resources that are better fit for TK K1, where most of the resources are teacher-led. I want to show one more resource before I walk away because you won't see this throughout the pilot. This is the type of reading support all students need. Notice now, when I highlight the text without collapsing the text or visiting any other area, I can translate the entire text. Right now, I've selected the language Spanish, but students and families and folks at home have that option to toggle between over ninety languages. What we want to do is offer a reading support, but also open up that support to projects kids are working on at home. They are reading at home, doing projects and work at home. Now families can support their kids with that learning. Okay, the, as we wrap up and I travel back to other materials. I'm going to wrap up with one last conversation, number one, because then, as we talk about other resources that we include with My World Interactive, this conversation really is about universal access. As we introduce the program, all teachers and students need is the one resource. So you have engaging activities without having to walk away from the core resource. This helps with planning, that your teachers are not digging around with additional materials. But we know that you are going to have students in your classroom, that you have kids at home that need something different. So we do offer ancillary resources to help meet the needs of all learners. We know that you've invested in an English Language Arts program. We correlate to that reading program. So that your teachers may begin to use My World Interactive and a crosswalk that we've developed and share those instructional minutes. If you're working on sequencing in ELA, find the chapter that focuses on sequencing and share a little bit of those instructional minutes to help engage your learners, teach high-quality, standards-based lesson, and make social studies instruction actually doable. One of the things we listen to with our teachers is that they don't always have a full twenty to thirty minutes to teach a lesson. They need resources that will allow them to engage with students if they have five minutes, if they have ten minutes, if it's a short week, if it's a month full of holidays. One thing you'll notice is that we do have in our inquiry projects, a flexible pathway that we're offering. Not just an inquiry project, but this is a standards-based project, so it could replace the text. If you have students who need something different, that project-based approach to instruction, we offer that flexibility. Here again, teacher choice, teachers can focus it on student outcome. If you want to have additional writing activities for your students, you might choose that quest. If you want them to have additional opportunities to practice language, you can choose that type of text. When we think of social studies, we don't always want to think of dates on a timeline or facts that our students are memorizing. We do want it to be a hands-on, minds-on experience. What if, instead of pulling out their textbook, their lesson was springboarding from an activity mat? What if talking about those students who do have special needs? And the modification is, they need to walk around their classroom. What if they were able to take part of their textbook in the hallway with them, bend it flexibly, and have a tangible resource? This is available digital and in print, and we're also proud to offer offline access. We also have in the project learning, additional opportunities to engage students that again, meet the flexibility that teachers need. Oftentimes, when we think of social studies, we do think of those projects. I can tell you again, teachers are spending a lot of time on Teachers Pay Teachers, planning multiple visits to a project. There's a lot that goes on to facilitating a project for the teacher in the classroom. One thing we want you to know about My World Interactive is that we include all of the resources a teacher could want to make it easy to facilitate. We don't want them using that website, Teachers Pay Teachers, unless they want to. We don't want them dragging materials home, spending additional hours on planning unless they have to. We want them leaving the building before seven. All right, I mean, you can tell, that's my colleague, I'm a former teacher. All right. So these types of projects are aligned to the standards and they're ready to go. They're available in print and digital, and they also offer a different modality. We talked about all of the literacy involved in the traditional textbook. This offers a pathway, including skits, readers, theater skits, as well as additional map activities and coloring pages. We also have literacy-based pathways to assist your kiddos in not only engaging in history, social studies content, but accessing the content. What if we use all of our scaffolds and we still have students who need help accessing that content? Here again, you're going to see differentiation between the grade levels. TK through second grade has a wonderful read aloud series that they'll be able to sample during pilot, and we hope beyond. These come to us from an author from the framework. Not only do they tell part of that comprehensive story with developing citizenship, focusing on character building, these are a really nice social, emotional learning piece. They are reading aloud at those grade levels, at that emergent grade level. A lot of reading is done by the teacher to model language, so a lot of read alouts are a positive thing. They'll like having extra read alouts. But this is also a fun art activity, developing historical empathy. So it comes with a template kit where they get to color glasses and listen to a typical schoolyard scenario. And then, when they hear the story again, they pull out the templates and color the glasses a different color, listen to that story, and begin to develop different perspectives. How do my friends feel about, how might another person feel about that situation? So we love, and your teachers will love, that read aloud. You'll see leveled readers, we had them with the old program here. Let me introduce you to the new and improved leveled readers. When your students need an additional scaffold, and if your teachers don't have that full thirty minutes, our leveled readers at the TK through fifth grade level are aligned to chapter content. So if a teacher needs to walk away from this twenty-minute lesson, you can pull these into a small group instruction or use them in a way that a teacher would like to flexibly use this resource. They do come in Spanish, they're available online. And we offer a differentiated resource for students that are at grade level accelerated learners, as well as our learners that are striving for grade level. The unique way that we level resources honors our students and approaches learning from a non-deficit model. So we're not going to level just by changing the lexile. We're going to develop the leveled readers so that the teacher can use one lesson plan, use the same vocabulary, teach the same content, and have the three different reading levels. And then, of course, as with all features of My World Interactive, a very nice teacher scaffold is included. Now, I did use specific language for the leveled readers. I mentioned TK through five because that's the most appropriate grade span for this type of reading. For the middle grades, you don't really have that back-of-the-table, small-group kidney support. We also talked about the content becoming more complex at middle grades. What we are offering for the middle grades is every lesson is leveled. So we're moving away from every chapter being leveled. And we are intensifying that scaffold for our students and offering every lesson to be leveled. We're also offering our leveled lessons in two different languages, English and Spanish. It's available digitally, of course, and we also have a summary of the audio. Differentiation is something that's happening on both ends with our instructional materials. What the students are engaged with, but also what tools the teacher has in his or her or their back pocket to easily differentiate material as they're teaching. So what we have as they are piloting materials in their teacher's edition is that scaffold that does speak to ways that you can amplify, modify your lesson as a teacher without having to pull in an additional resource. And not only will you see support pieces for your students with special needs, you will see support pieces again for accelerated learners, as well as students who might need a little bit of extra support reaching grade level. The entire program as introduced is completely aligned to grade level standards, the framework, as well as grade level ELD standards. So you'll also find in those differentiation supports, ways to incorporate English language development, language activities. So robust, robust planning for that support allows us to offer with My World Interactive, our teachers to have a box of cupcakes, a variety of cupcakes. We want our teachers to have easy-to-use resources that understands the natural rhythm of the classroom and that they need a flexible resource that matches changing instructional minutes, but also students that have different needs. So we want teachers to have their cupcake with a really nice resource that has everything, but also ancillary resources that they never have to use, they can sit on the shelf. But if you have a student who's allergic to sugar, you can pull out our recipe for carrot cake. All right? You may have some students where this cupcake is delicious, but it's just not right for that one student. They have a gluten allergy. Don't worry, we have a special recipe for that as well. And it could be, right, that this is fun, this is engaging, but it's a special holiday. We have a special type of cupcake for that as well. So we have those easy-to-use ancillary pieces. We know you're going to see flexible pathways. Remember with My World Interactive, these pathways for flexibility are student-centered, based on student outcome, not just how many minutes I have to teach. And again, thinking about your district, very, very grateful to be a part of this review process. We do integrate with the platforms that you have already invested in. So if it's Seesaw, Clever, or Google Classroom, we do have that integration available. All right, I want to say thank you very much, we'll pause here for questions, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Not pause, but stop here for questions.
Do you have a copy of your presentation? You know, you've shared a lot of information, but I like to keep that and, you know, look at it and read it and go over. Do you have a copy of that?
We don't have a copy of the presentation, but we do have developed a virtual resource folder for the district. It has all of the images, all of the information I shared. It's just a proprietary reason why we can't share the exact slide source. But we have worked out a way to share with Vanessa, following up, something that we curated for the board. It will show every component and tell every story about short on time, literacy development, everything that we talked about.
Can you pass down your?
Oh, yes. Please keep in mind, these are not the fresh new samples we dropped off, these are Ms. Cotton's real, used books, so.
You get to see the quality, they last a while.
I just want to take a look at it.
And are, are there in, any other questions, trust trustees, that you may have?
Thank you for your time.
Very much, yes. Thank you, I dressed up for you, this is important, it is an important decision, so, thank you.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Eck, Eckus, can you turn on your mic? Just press the little purse, person.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay, um, so my question is, okay, so if I understand this right, each child in each classroom gets all this stuff that you showed us tonight, or just parts of it? Like, I remember when I was a kid, my history books were almost like this. So will a child get issued one of these, or it's just in the classroom for them to use in the classroom because they're so heavy? And is this, my understanding, this is the workbook that goes with it, right? That they can take home or take pages out and stuff like that? Or do they get both, take both home? I mean.
We have some differences across the grade level, but if you will be my model, what you have in your hand as you're touching, those are both the same resource, but they're meant for different students. So the consumable, flexible piece is the student edition. Every student would get one of those, that is the core resource, the main resource. That is what teachers would use essentially every day, TK through five. When the content becomes a little bit more complex, when it's not part of their self-contained classroom, but a period that they go to, a course, then we're going to have the textbook that you touched with the hardcover. And that has a companion piece, so they can pick up those close reading skills.
Okay, because it's designed for their little minds, the younger ones can comprehend this, take out pages, get all that little bit of history or.
Exactly.
Okay, and then when they.
Sing songs, watch videos.
They get this puppy that we used to get when we were kids that have the meat.
Right.
And all the important stuff.
Right.
And we are talking about ancient history and all that stuff that we learned as kids.
Yes.
Here was updated stuff that, of course, have happened since we've gotten older. So it's all in here, right, from way back then to now. And again, this is for the older kids that can comprehend it. And again, these little workbooks are for the little ones that can take stuff out and learn after a case.
Beautiful description, yes.
Good, good, yeah, no simple-minded, so.
Well, that was our idea, remember streamlined approach. We know you're using what I like to call the yellow cards, where you had a ton of resources that you needed to use for the main lesson. The second part of your question, those activity mats, the leveled readers, those are teacher resources that can live on the bookshelf. You pull those in when you have the student needs. A teacher will know, I have a student. A teacher will know, I have a student that needs this resource. Um, but it isn't something that's distributed for students. We wanted that streamlined experience. Did we have another question from Christine?
No, um, do, do we have any other quick questions?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Okay, um. First off, the video content that is allowed online, will we have access to reviewing that as well?
Yes, of course. So during the pilot process, what we curated especially for, uh, the board, um, you have full access, we like to call it a sandbox. So you can play around. I want to challenge you all, I don't want to say you can't break anything, but we want you to be able to, um, look at it on a student's end, look at resources that a teacher has, project it, click on it, play on it. Yes, no restrictions.
And then I'm assuming this has already been adopted by other school districts. Do you have any data on what their reflections are? Or if their schools have improved, et cetera?
That's a really good question. I'll take it in two parts. We do, of course, have a very nice user list. And then we do have a process for testimonials. Um, we do take it very seriously at Savvas with student data. So we know that districts like to work with each other. Um, and we do have Carolyn that helps facilitate that. But it isn't something that we publicly post, a district's progress, a di- a district's scores, or students' actual scores, or any data. But it is something that we can behind the scenes admin to admin set up. Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Um, on first review, I, I didn't do any hard digging or anything, but when I Googled this, um, curriculum, it comes out to having about two stars. Do you have any comment on that?
I wish they would have had a training for Ms. Cotton. I believe that this is a really high-quality program. And I believe for any learning community, um, there's not going to be a perfect or the one perfect curriculum. But I would love to have an opportunity to speak with that person and show them, uh, maybe you didn't see the tiny cupcakes or carrot cake recipe.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, trustees, any others?
I don't have a question, but I want to say thank you. You were very thorough and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, as are we. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank, thank you.
And thank you for that presentation. At this time, we'll take a short recess and give the next publisher time to set up. So, uh, Madam President, uh, is five minutes okay for the board? Take a short recess?
How, how about eight?
Eight. We will take an eight-minute recess at this time to allow the, uh, next publisher to set up. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, eight. they made some really good snacks. Uh, thank, tell them thank, thank you, please. The ceviche, vich- vicha was perfect. Perfect. So, it is greatly appreciated.
Test, test. Check one, two.
Okay. Okay.
So, you can do it like this, and then you should be able to hear, they'll hear you on Zoom.
It does. Okay. Hello, hello, hello. Is it on?
Yeah.
All right, I, I think our eight men, men, minutes have come and passed. It always seems to go by so fast. If, um, let's go ahead and get ready for the next part. Okay. 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 Okay, so, all five trustees are back, and I think we're red, red, ready.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here today. My name is Deborah Shepherd. I'm a cricket specialist with McGraw-Hill. My official name is Deborah. I couldn't say my R's as a child, so, um, I was Debo. So I actually go by Deb now, so call me Deb or Deborah. But, um, really excited to be here to introduce you kind of that big picture of California Impact. We know that the students in Adelanto will be piloting both Impact and Impacto, our Spanish resources. So I want to give you a nice big picture of what it is, how we differentiate, how we support the learners, um, in the classrooms. So with that in mind, I'll go ahead and. they made some really good snacks. Uh, thank, tell them, thank, thank you, please. The ceviche, vichy was perfect. So it is greatly appreciated.
Test, test, check one, two.
Okay, so all five trustees are back and I think we're read, ready.
Okay, well, thank you for having us here today. My name is Deborah Shepherd. I'm a curriculum specialist with McGraw Hill. My official name is Deborah. I couldn't say my R's as a child, so I was Debo. So I actually go by Deb now, so call me Deb or Deborah. But I'm really excited to be here to introduce you kind of that big picture of California impact. We know that the students in Adelanto will be piloting both Impact and Impacto, our Spanish resources. So I want to give you a nice big picture of what it is, how we differentiate, how we support the learners in the classrooms. So with that in mind, I'll go ahead and not be stuck here, so hold on. Oh, hello. That's very interesting. Yes, it just wants me to stand still. So here we go. This is part of Impact and Impacto. So with Impact and Impacto, there's a teacher edition. And I'm really going to talk actually TK through eighth grade. We're actually a curriculum of TK through 12th grade. We decided to invest in high school, um, Impact as well. So this is a California program written to our framework. So every teacher gets a teacher edition. There is a student edition. We used to lovingly call that a textbook, but now we can call it like an encyclopedia or Wikipedia, since we can do it digitally as well. In sixth or eighth grade, we actually call it a student edition. But in K5, we, we call it a research companion. Because in social studies, that's what we're actually teaching our students. That concept of how do you research for information? So we call it a research companion because we want our K5 students to get the, the concept of what it means to research for learning. Then there is a consumable. The consumable is called an inquiry journal. The inquiry journal is a piece that is actually throughout all the grade levels. And it's that consumable that students can consume by writing in it. For any teachers that want to use it digitally, it does come in both a fillable PDF. Some teachers like it in that regard, or as an ebook. So it's whatever way the classroom teachers would like to use it. Impact was designed to be able to be taught in print, taught digitally. Um, I worked throughout the state of California with a lot of Impact teachers, actually TK through 12th grade. And I'm noticing a lot of hybrid. We have some of the younger students who's fine motor skills have been a little bit less than ideal. Certainly with the pandemic. So those primary teachers are really liking students holding a pencil and being able to draw and doing that kind of interactivity to develop those important fine motor skills. So like I said, print, digital, or anywhere in between, between. Something I do want to point out that we thought was important with Impact and Impacto was an app. And the reason why this is important is a student does not need to have wifi to access an ebook. We know not every child leaves here in a, in a wifi dependent household. And we're thinking about equity. Some, some students might have some kind of devices, maybe a phone from a parent, whatever it might be, but not the wifi itself. So students can have the books read aloud. They can highlight, do all that interactivity without depending on wifi. And then when they sync back to the wifi world, all of those notes they took will be part of their platform. So it's able to sync up. We just want to think about that equity and that digital divide that we're facing here in our, in our state. The other thing I just want to point out digitally is right now, your teachers in the elementary school are using that Wonders in Maravillas. And you have what we call an integration, which means that the students and the teachers go to one spot to get their curriculum. Impact and Impacto is part of that. So the teachers, parents alike, could go to one place and get both the reading and the social studies resources. So once again, the ease of use for accessibility for both teachers and students and parents to be able to access it. Um, I'd like to talk about Impacto for a moment. Um, I'm a former dual teacher, started teaching dual in the early 90s. And the importance of non-Google translation goes a very long way for our students that are part of that dual world. Um, a direct translation will bump up most often the readability. So we wanted to make sure it was authentically written so that that readability, if the third grade book is third grade, both in English and Spanish. So those little things that can make a difference. And we do offer the ability to Google translate any of our books or ebooks into any other language. But because of the California program in Spanish, being, um, being the language that a lot of our English learners speak as our first language, we wanted to make sure that part was in that investment for Impact and Impacto. We do have TK, TK, both in English and Spanish. And TK is all about teaching our little students how to work together, how to get along, how do you play nicely? All those things that we want our four-year-olds to develop. Um, we do that through the world of social studies. You're here because you're looking at new curriculum. And one of the main reasons is because our framework has changed in California. So with that in mind, as we look at Impact or Impacto, the content, primary sources was a big change. So that's something that we wanted to really invest in with Impact and Impacto, and also connections to today. If I'm a 12-year-old sitting in ancient Civ, why do I care? What does it have to do with me as a 12-year-old here? So we really want to make sure that we, um, that we connect for the students. Also literacy. We know that reading is part of social studies, so is listening and speaking, so is talking, so are debates, so are discussions, all of those things. So that literacy shift is what you'll see as well. Trying to have favorites, but citizenship. How do you participate? But look at that, informed participation. How do you take action to help influence your communities? How can you influence your classroom in that positive way? So we want to develop our students as thoughtful citizens. And last but not least is that inquiry. And that's why our consumable, not by accident, is called the inquiry journal, because inquiry is one of our shifts. So let me discuss a little bit about how these two resources are put together for you. So once again, the inquiry journal. There is something called the C3 framework. And the C3 framework actually is referenced in our California framework about how do you teach inquiry to students? How do you get them to ask questions? How do you get them to get answers? How do you get them to share their learnings? So we use that C3 framework and that inquiry arc as kind of beacon to decide, design that inquiry journal itself. So we always want to engage our students. So we start off always with an essential question. This is fourth grade. How did California struggle and work together during the difficulties of the 20th century? A fourth grade teacher's goal is for a child to be able to explain that at the end of this chapter. Okay, this is called a, uh, essential question or enduring understanding part of social studies. We also want students to think about, what do you want to learn about this? You're not, it's, it's not about being a passive passenger in the world of social studies. It's about being active and being participatory in those discussions. We do have projects. Our projects, one thing I do want to point out about the projects, they're called inquiry projects. And there's a lot of different modalities, from drawing, to writing, to speeches, to group projects. Our students don't all learn the same. And we want every student to feel successful. So we're going to do different types of projects to be inclusive to all our different modalities that we have in the classroom. We have lessons, and our lessons are about, we looked at who worked for change in California. Have any of you been to the Huntington Library by chance, out of curiosity? So we have a couple authors that are historians there, and they had one job. Curate our primary sources. Make sure it's accessible for whatever age it is. Make sure there's some great discussions you can have about it. So we're looking at pictures and we're talking. What are people in this picture protesting? And why do you think they're protesting it? Let's have that discussion. We also, close to literacy, teach our students close reading, but it's really not just about close reading. It's about how do you analyze a source? You've got a five-year-old, analyze a source. What's a source? What? So we want to make sure, we do it with pictures in kindergarten. How do you get information? Because quite frankly, by sixth grade, there was an assumption, you will know how to analyze a source by a sixth grade. So if we don't teach a foundation at K5, our sixth graders are not set up for the same type of success. All right, so we want to make sure we set that up with a nice little, let me go back to this. Let's inspect, and this is the consumable, everyone, right? So we're inspecting, we're underlining, we're finding evidence about people that work for change. And then I love this one, let's make a connection. What do you think these quotes mean? Why are they important to become active citizens? How will that help with citizenship? Okay, the same is, it goes the same in middle school. I just want to show a couple of different examples. This is sixth grade, where we're asking students, why does conflict develop? We're looking at Sparta and Athens, a lot of conflict. But why did it develop? Let's learn why it developed. Let's talk about it. Let's do something that a lot of middle school teachers do, which are called document-based questions. Let's have primary sources with built-in DBQs, the higher order thinking. We really want our middle school students to go towards as learners. The last thing I want to point out in the consumable, we want our students to always share what they've learned. What have you learned? He worked for change. How did they work for change? Okay, so we're always going to bring it full circle in Impact and Impacto. Okay, so that's the consumable. The student edition itself, started teaching in the 90s, and I got a textbook, and I took it out, 21 years old, and my students groaned. It's not what you want when it comes to social studies. You want it to be inviting. You make it inviting with a mixture of pictures, visual literacy, enough text on a page, but not too much text, and places to stop and check, and let students talk about their learning. Working for change through education, let's stop and check that. So every two pages, we have a stop and check. Even in middle school, every few pages, a stop and check. Okay? When it comes to the connection to literacy, every grade level will have reference to the ELA standards that are taught for each and every lesson. Okay? We also, for every lesson, will have EL scaffolds and differentiation from students with special needs to students that are approaching, to students that are beyond. One of the best things about teaching is it's not a cookie cutter world. It's part of the hard part of teaching, but part of the joy of it, reaching all those learners and seeing them shine. So we want to make sure that teachers have those assets to be able to teach and, and all of their students. For ELs, we have things like collaboration, graphic novels, they love those. Scaffolds, and I say English learners, but think about English-only students that need some extra support with language. That can support students that need support with that language that we want to give to our students. Because it's the California program, we know that language and social studies is essential. So we actually created an entire resource that is focused is, how do you work on the language of the student books? How do you unpack the text? How do you give sentence starters to begin discussions and writing? This is a 100% the language of social studies. With, it's its own language, right? It's that academic language that we really want to support the students. Now, like I said, as a former dual, and I did do a little tier when I first saw this, we have the same resource for our Spanish target language. First time I've ever seen that, I started teaching in the 90s, where there's actually support with language support for Spanish being the target language, English the target language, or Spanish. So once again, that equity for our students. Okay? Extra support, all of our videos have closed captioning, little thing that can go a long way. All of our books are read aloud. And remember, that book can also be accessed with no wifi in that digital format. So just some different ways that we can support our students with it. Um, this is just middle school to show you that we're very consistent with differentiation. You can drop the readability of the student edition. When I say you, I mean the teacher. We're not going to leave it to a 13-year-old to pick the level that a 13-year-old wants to read. Because you'll have some students that don't need it, but they'll pick it anyway. So we really want the teacher to be able to say, does it need to be a dropped reading level? Primary sources will stay the same. We don't, we don't touch primary sources, because if you do, they're not primary. So we want to make sure those stay the same. We have an adaptive learning SMART book, which is the student edition with built-in questions. And it adapts to how students are answering the questions. It is, it is specific, adaptive to each and every student. Okay? Our gifted students have just as many needs with the challenging. We want to make sure, we have to support students that need that extra support, that access. We need to challenge our students that are gifted. So when you think about this, we have multiple projects, we have activities. All of these are open-ended. So one student can take it to this level, another student can take it to that level. But we want to provide teachers, parents, that ability to see their students or child really strive to show all that they, they have learned and what they know about the topics. Okay? With that in mind, I just wanted to show, we do have something called a Snap into Wonders in Maravillas. So your K5 teachers, ELA or Spanish Language Arts often is the driver. So what we've done is we said, what unit in Wonders would connect to what chapter in Impact? Because tandem and dovetailing is really important in that elementary classroom to make those minutes build on each other. Okay, so we're giving teachers the tools to connect by the ELA standards and by themes. Okay? The other thing I wanted to show you, just one last thing. I wanted to show you the ebook. This is seventh grade Imperial China. This is an interactive book where students can highlight, underline, take notes. This is what they can do offline, remember, in that app? Same functionality that they can do. A neat thing, I'm going to wrap up with this, map reading. Do you think it's a skill that's getting stronger or a bit weaker in our world? When I talk about Thomas Guide, people ask me, who's Thomas? I said, if you know Thomas, you had to know how to read X, Y grids, you had to be able to go to an index, you had to reference where that was on A5. I've kept one, because it's a relic. I have, I have, I have Santa Clara County in my car to this day. But we want to teach students about time and place. We want them to understand where they're about to study. So here's Imperial China, they're about to head to this part of the world. So they're going to walk into the place, and we have interactive maps for that. So here's the place. You can take, students can take off layers to see what the sections were. They can make it a bit larger or smaller. Students can draw on these maps. And I'm just going to end with the personal favorite. This ruler is basically the legend that you probably had at one time learning social studies, where this was 100 kilometers or 100 miles, and you had to map out point A to point B inch by inch, right? That's just our reality, is what we've had. Well, now we have this ruler with a click and a double-click, it lets you know distance and relations. So geographical thinking is so important for our students. And so we're going to do that as well as step into chronological thinking. So students learn in Impact. When we start teaching chronological history, which is fourth grade, that's the first year in our standards, that's chronological history. They learn that yes, there were things going on in Imperial China, but there are other things happening in the rest of the world at that same time. So that part to whole that helps students see things globally. Okay? Everything with Impact and Impacto for the teachers is in the mind of, how much time do I have to teach? I want to make sure every minute counts. I want to make sure I develop my students as thinkers, that they're able to communicate what they've learned about important social studies topics. And really influence our students to realize they have such ability to make differences in families, in classrooms, and really beyond. So the idea is that students will make an impact. So that's Impact in a bit of a nutshell. I'm here to answer questions as well.
Okay, trustees, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Uh, your, your microphone trustee, I guess?
Well, I hurt my back today, and it's like, oh.
Oh, sorry about that.
Um, anyway, um, okay, so here's my question.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it's wonderful that we have everything in Spanish and English for the English language learners. But also, I am curious, our whole point is trying to get the kids to learn English. So if we give them the Spanish books, won't it kind of handicap them? Or do they like graduate out of the book? Or is the book Spanish and English? I mean, how does it work?
So Holly, that's a great question.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting used to this too. So we have
So we have, that's our dual immersion program. So each grade level, there's a certain part of the day in Spanish and a certain part of the day in English. So that as they go through, the idea is that they are bilingual, fully able to read and write in Spanish. Fully able to read and write. So if they're in the dual immersion, they would get both copies. If they're in regular general ed, they get the English version.
Oh, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
So, so Spanish is designed for dual language.
I got you. And we do have a school that.
Do you have a school in that?
So, so I get it.
So Holly, that one school will be the one that will be looking at, oh, I want English as a target language. But I also want Spanish as that target language, right? So that school is going to have that ability to have the content.
Okay, I have another question. Now, I know I probably shouldn't be thinking this way, but I know a lot of our English language students. Their parents really want to learn what the kids are learning, you know, because not all of them are, you know, citizens and don't know our culture. Can they go online and maybe work, you know, do homework with the kid? Or when the kid's at school, can they go online and like read stuff in Spanish to help them understand their child's? Learning or homework? Is it designed kind of like that or no?
So it depends on what grade level. So K through five is designed for that dual language. Where that parent would have both languages anyway. Starting in middle school, there is Spanish support built into the platform. So sixth through twelfth grade, there is what we call a blade, a category. That will have that Spanish support. Our schools of home letters come in both languages, actually comes in multiple languages. Not everyone's going to be like my Maria, who and I taught her in fifth grade. She, if we were doing an English week, she put everything in Spanish for her mom to quiz her and study with her. Not everyone's going to be Maria in this world. So it just really depends on how it's utilized. Parents will have access to their child's account through their integration.
That's wonderful. And then thank you again for not having to have wifi. Because we do live in a community that, I'm telling you, I know a lot of people that cannot afford wifi, you know? And that's a big plus to know that they can do that. My last question is, you said it comes in different languages. I know Mandarin is huge down the hill. I, I have heard it's going to start moving on up here. So let's just say we had a couple of kids in our district that were Mandarin, any other language. You, you said that they can access that and is that like at home that they can learn in their native language?
So what they can do for our books. So far, our books here, let me zoom in this little bit. You can Google Translate any of this, any of our ebooks. Into, let me move this right here. Into any of these languages.
That's wonderful.
So that's a lot to pick from, but yes, the one language we have built in is that Spanish with that dual language type of understanding. But our ebooks and both books open up in a new tab, which allows, allows that translation to happen at any grade level.
Okay, so getting back to that other question, let's say there's a mother and a child, they're working on a homework project. And the parents don't speak English, but the child does. Can the parent or the child click on Spanish so mom can read in Spanish with the child is reading in English and then be able to help them?
It would be. It is something that you would need wifi because Google Translate is something that is added to a, to the URL. So that is something to be aware of, that the answer is yes.
That's wonderful.
Any of those languages that you see populated up here.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome, Holly. Yes.
Awesome presentation and I'm, I'm happy that you addressed the digital divide because that's an. Issue that like trustee has mentioned, a lot of our families do not have wifi and we live in areas that the wifi is really shaky. And I like that. You mentioned that all of your curriculum is brand new. What, when did you?
So our framework came out, I believe it was twenty seventeen was our framework. So impact was created. I should know this. I did the state presentation, so I should know this. I did the state presentation, I think in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen or eighteen. We had to wait for the framework first. Because our standards in California didn't really change, but it was our framework is guiding our teachers with our ultimate goals that we want our students to have from social studies. So impact is brand new. You, you can't. And it's, you can't find it prior to the date of twenty seven, eighteen. You know what, silly? I can go look into my copyright right here. Hold on. That's why we do, we do copyrights in here for a reason. So it's twenty nineteen. Thank you. Twenty nineteen is the copyrights. Thank you. Factors. Are there any other questions that I can address with this? This group?
Trustees?
I just have a couple. First off, same as we as trustees will have the access to the print, the digital and the app, correct?
Correct.
For review. Okay, and then also. When, when you say K through five foundation. You know, now learning how, how new your program is. And you had mentioned earlier in your speech that you were a teacher, would you have the confidence in stilling this in a classroom of your students?
One hundred percent.
Okay.
The word research got me right away. But yeah, so Stephanie, I taught both fifth and sixth grade, so I've, I've seen the difference between a middle school expectation and elementary and social studies. And it's pretty large. So that foundation of how to analyze sources that happened in that K-five world. Builds a, kind of like an anchor for the students when they get to middle school and they get a source, they can go back to, oh, how did I analyze it? It gives them that routine to fall back on as they're given sources to analyze. Thank you.
And I do not have questions. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so that does conclude our publisher presentation. So board, I just want to say thank you. And at this time before we completely close. We want to make sure that we have on record which materials you are wanting for review. Whether that's all grade levels, certain grade levels, and both of those will be arranged to be delivered for your review. Okay, so I believe Ms. Leve, are you going to? Take that?
Absolutely. Let me know.
Okay, trustees, I don't know, Ms. Leve, just call a name, I guess, and ask them?
Sure, I'll start from the list. Trustee Webster?
Could I get all materials?
Trustee Turner? Trustee LaFrench?
Of course, I'll take TK.
TK?
Yes.
Trustee Akis? Trustee Benz?
I'll take fifth and I'll take eighth grade.
Thank you.
Ms. Leve, can I say TK and six?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so again, that concludes, I want to thank you. Again, just another big thank you to our academic services team. We have Wendy, Vaughn, Mr. Baird, Vanessa, Lori and Carol. Thank you for all the facilitation, the behind the scenes. And to our teachers about to embark on this pilot, this is very important work for our district. And Board of Trustees, I just want to thank you all for coming tonight and helping us to kick this off correctly. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to thank our, our pilot team for take, taking this on and go, going into uncharted territory. And I'm excited, excited to hear what, what you think of the programs. Because it ultimately, you know, you're going to head this for our district. So I think, thank you for that.
President Benz?
Yes.
I do have a question. Dr. DeWais, on you mentioned that we will include students in, in evaluating the material as well. Will they be a part of the selection criteria or how would that work?
So what happens is when they're in the pilot phase, we specifically ask the student, so it's right in front of them. So within the actual pilot, our team is working on a way to capture all of the student feedback. So it's not just a few, it'll be many, all of our students who are a part, the teachers who are a part, we're going to get all of their feedback.
And how will you engage the parents in this selection process?
So the parents will be engaged. We have multiple opportunities. Thank you for having that up from eleven twenty-eight all the way until two seven. We're going to have different stakeholder opportunities where parents can come in. It'll be set up kind of like our room over here in the back. Parents can come in, peruse, we'll have an academic services team member always present to answer any questions that the parents may have as well. So we will have multiple opportunities for parents. Also, not just here at the district office, it will also have them at different school sites. And we will have that list of schools available. I think we just compiled, we're compiling those.
And the information would go out to parents how through Peachjar on a regular basis, so they'll know.
So more of using our parent square now. So parent square is our main, so we're going to use parent square, we're going to use Peachjar. We're also going to talk about it, our stakeholder engagement meetings, our DAC, our LCAP. So if, if by the end of this year, a parent doesn't know we're going through an adoption. We, we should know, we'd be in trouble for that. So multiple opportunities.
Great. Thank you for that, Dr. DeWais. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So now we will go on to five new business, five point zero one. Approved Board Resolution twenty-two point twenty-three point eleven, make, making findings as required by AB three six one. To permit the COVID nineteen emerge emergency remains in place. Or until Jan, January twenty twenty-three, when the new Brown Act requirement changes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Akis?
And can I get a sec, second? Okay, we're open for discussion.
I have a question. It says. Teleconference while the COVID nineteen emergency remain in place or until January twenty-three? So are we saying that? What actually are we voting for here? Or which one?
We're, we're vote, both voting to, to extend another third, thirty days again. But the thing is by Jan, Jan, January twenty twenty-three, because there is a new law that, that's been writ, written. And the, the, this is going to change. I, I read some, something quickly about it.
Yes, that's correct, Madam President. On November fifteenth, we will have an update to the board on the new requirements. We're just waiting on legal to give us a memo on the changes that were voted in and signed by the governor related to this. And so again, on November fifteenth, we'll have an update to the board on what will change in January.
Okay, so this motion is to extend for thirty days, not until the remaining. Until January twenty-third. So do we need a new motion? Are we approving this for thirty days or until the new Brown Act come out in January?
Madam President, this still has to abide by the state law, which is thirty days.
Okay. So we're approving that we. The motion is to approve for another thirty days.
Correct.
Okay.
And are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustees, please use your keypad. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Akis?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye. Mo, mo, motion passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to six, Paul, policy introductions, updates and read readings, six point zero one. Academic services adopt and approve the first reading of the odd, odd along, Lonto, Al, elementary school, school did district. Board Paul, policy BP five one three one point eight. Mob, mobile comm, communication, D, device. Can I get a motion to approve?
Akis?
And can I get a sec, second?
Webster, a second.
We're open for discussion?
On this particular. Policy, you know, I, I'm in agreement that. Devices should only be used in certain case, in, in emergency situation. I haven't had the chance to, you know, really just dissect this, but you know, with everything that's going on in our schools, you know. Parent feel, parents feel comfortable with their children, children having a mobile device in case of an emergency. I would not like to hold all kids. Hostage, you know, for a couple of kids using their devices. In a way that they should not be used. So. I will be looking at this and probably making some recommendations to change it. Or. For the board to vote on changing it. I, I feel that holding, saying all kids cannot have a, a mobile device at school, it's not conducive to what we want to do. Only those children that violate the law or the, the policy should be held accountable. So I'll be looking at this again.
Okay, trustees?
I, I agree. Honestly, I have not had time to go over the full policy. Thank goodness, this is our first reading. But I know we need something, something. So to get this going and be able to have a time to look over it and correct things or change things. That's beautiful because then we can keep moving forward at the next meeting and hopefully come to a conclusion. I do believe we need to do something. I won't get all into it right now, but yeah, kids are in school to learn, you know, and if they're distracted, you can't learn. And I do believe every child is allowed to have a phone and to have it on them or within their reach for emergencies. But as far as looking at it, texting, doing things during class time, I have a little bit of a problem with that. So I will be looking at this also. And again, you know, if we need to make changes, that's great. But I agree with Ms. Turner, we can't, we can't take away their freedom or their rights. So I'm in agreement with that, but something does need to be done. It really does. So, and it's unfortunate that the, the public got a lot of miscommunication because of the cell phones and things that were going on. And I mean, that's just how trouble starts, you know, people going right away online, Facebook, social media. Making things worse than what they are, saying things are worse than what they are. That's how things get out of control and that can't be happening. We, we need to have control. We need to let everybody know that we are on it. We know what we're doing, we're handling things and it just gets crazy, absolutely crazy. And yeah, something needs to be done. So I'm glad we're doing this and thank you staff for putting this together. Because we, we do need to address our concerns. So thank you.
And, and, and any trustees? No? Okay, I do, do agree. We do need, need to look at this and dissect this because unfortunately. You know, the phones were used to disrupt school, to scare kids and parent, parents and teachers. You know, I mean, Columbia had like. You know, I mean, Columbia had like three lockdowns in a week. They had to evac, evacuate the school. And, you know, it is hard to, to, you know, all of a sudden go across. But unfortunate, fortunately, those aren't the only things that are happening with the schools. I mean, there's some serious things happening with the phones that are, they're breaking the law. And I think we need to be clear on everything, so that it's clear, you know? What rules are you breaking? We need to look at, and then what will happen if you break these rules? Also, I think this search and seizure, seizure thing, we need to be really clear on that. I mean, I think we really need, need to look at that. Because this is going to be big and we're going to get a lot of pu, pushback. But again, the cell phones are really disrupting the learning that's go, going on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, and, and members of the board for your comments this evening. We realized that we did not have any policy related to our cell phones. And so we wanted to bring before the board a draft of potentially language that would really give us the ability, if, if needed. For instance, if a student is using an unauthorized manner, for instance, to be able to confiscate the phone as an example. Because currently, again, we did not have anything in place that would allow us to do that. And so as the board goes through this and, and reads through it, and perhaps at a, at a future board meeting, we welcome any feedback and any edits that the board may feel they'd like to make on this. But again, President Benz, I agree with you. We recently had many instances of phones being abused and did cause unnecessary panic amongst our staff, our students and our families. And we want to make sure the students are there to learn and that our staff are able to teach them in the manner that they deserve to be taught in. And so again, I appreciate the board's consideration as they go through this policy, thank you.
Okay, so this is the, the fir, first read. So it can be changed, it can be adjusted, and it, and it can be add, added on. Okay, so. And, huh? Yeah. Hey, so let's go ahead, do, do we have an, any other questions or dis, discussion on the, the side item? Okay, now hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Webster?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If I vote, yes, it doesn't put any of this into effect currently?
No, this, this, this is the, 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 the first read. That's it.
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Ekis?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye, mo, motion passes, oops, sorry, five zero. Okay, go, going on to adjournment, can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Webster motions to approve.
And I need a sec, second? Okay, second from Ekis, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye.
Trustee Ekis?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye, motion passes five zero zero, the, the time is now set seven forty-two. Thank, thank you and have a good night.